I called to order the Maplewood City Council meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Kickapoo, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and Great Sioux Nation people. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Traxler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Correll.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah.
Councilmember Homa.
Yeah.
Mayor Canapper.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yeah.
Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, reform is present.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number six.
Approval of the city council agenda.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Traxler, item number seven, please.
Public hearing to hear citizen comments on a request by the city to amend Chapter fifty-six zoning, Division two SR single-family residential district, Sections fifty-six dash seventy-three A, fifty-six dash seventy-three B, fifty-six dash seventy-three E, fifty-six dash seventy-three G SR district parking, and fifty-six one zero six one A one.
Thank you. At this time, the public is invited to provide comments regarding item number seven. If you are joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand. You will be called upon. You are joining us in the chambers. Please step to the podium. Remember to press the button the entire time that you talk. Please provide your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Mary Killian. I live at thirty-one fifty-nine Cherry in Maplewood, Missouri. I find it troubling that we are here for the third and final reading of an ordinance that can have far-reaching implications on what residents can do with their own property. And this is the first opportunity for the public to weigh in on the issue. It is also my understanding that the Board of Adjustment was not consulted in crafting these changes. They are the city's legal body charged with granting variances for exceptions to zoning ordinance, and their input would be valuable. If you value transparency and public input, which I think you do, I know, you know, in the last session, you know, that you talked about transparency, and I appreciate that. You will be able to table this bill until the public has had an opportunity to digest the legislation that could have profound consequences for present and future homeowners in our city and provide you with information you need to make an informed, intelligent, and inclusive decision. As a side about myself, I am lucky to be as active as I am. I'm almost seventy-eight years old. I want to live in my house, to remain there. At some point, I may need aid, either from my family members or from a live-in caregiver. I'm going to have to make adjustments to my home for this, you know, adding accessible bathroom, things as I age, and I'd love to age in place, and I know we want seniors to do that. These are things that have to be thought about. If my family moves in to help me, I will need more space, but it's unfortunately, I think probably inevitable. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Bryan. I live at thirty-one thirty-eight Sutton, and I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I also served on the Board of Adjustment for four years. And I just want to speak in favor of this change to the ordinances. I think it's very important.
And the camp. Don't look at us. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to say I'm very take to heart what the person was just talking about. We wanted to age in place and make adjustments to the house to be able to do that, and the council's already made steps in that, making it easier to build ramps and things like that. And the Board of Adjustment is there to grant variances, and we do that all the time. We, I mean, I'm not on there anymore, but I think that nobody's trying to stop people from being aged in place, and the council's worked on that before. And I also want to say that on the Planning, Jordan, sorry, Planning and Zoning Commission, it's always an open meeting. We post the agendas. We always have public forums at these city council meetings. And I think the public, we want input, and anybody who wants to come to a planning zoning meeting, please come out, because we want to hear from you. But I think it's a good piece of legislation. One of the things it does is it cuts down actually on how much people are going to have to go to the planning zoning, or sorry, to the Board of Adjustment to put their houses in line with the other houses on the block. That's something that could also save the city a lot of money just in going through the process of hiring their lawyer and having lawyers and all the people come out for the board, and the petitioners to go through all this process just to put their house on the same line as everybody else. And again, I know that Matt's worked on this a lot for years, talked about, you know, preserving affordable housing and the character of the neighborhood, not to be building huge houses. And we want to keep affordable housing. We want to keep the neighborhoods the same as they are. We don't want to stop people from being able to live in their houses. That's the first thing from our mind. But anyway, I think it's a good piece of legislation, and thank you.
Those tall zooms. I'm in Cleveland, seventy-one fourteen High Street. I too wanted to speak on this. I appreciate the the ability here. I think it's great to preserve our, preserve our neighborhoods and preserve affordable housing. Unfortunately, I think there are some scenarios that this doesn't address that that can have a negative effect. So I'd like to share just three that came to me today. Number one, is a similar architect purchases a vacant home in Maplewood in the early nineties. It's seventeen hundred square feet, two bedroom, and it cost them fifty thousand dollars. Thirty years later, that architect's mom has two teenage children. Wants to add on so both kids have their own bedroom. The neighboring homes are only twelve hundred square feet. A house addition would be denied because the home is already larger than the neighbors'. The architect and family will have moved out of Maplewood because they can't afford the prices in Maplewood. Just scenarios myself, in case you didn't figure that out. This is, I was already close to birching. My wife and I have been talking about this, and looking at adding on to our house so that the neighbors would have their own bedroom. And I don't see short of a variance, which is no guarantee. I don't see short of variance the ability to do that. I was level at school, you have this school, you're going to stay in this community, but you're forty years or something, you'll leave here. But I might have a choice, you know, if these restrictions are there. Scenario number two, a twelve hundred square foot home on the street with all little houses that are twelve hundred square feet, the house burns down. It becomes an inviolable vacant lot because no builder is going to build that small of a house because the price per square foot is too great to balance any profit. No one can build their own house in that lot because the price for custom house is too expensive. Scenario number three, a person buys one of the existing small affordable homes in Maplewood because they're experiencing financial constraints. This is who this ordinance is meant to help. Now years later, their financial situation has improved because of our investment in Maplewood. They now have two children and have outgrown that small starved home. They have enough room and a lot for an addition, but it will have to be a two hundred square foot addition, you know, for the third bedroom and hallway to get to it. Ordinance only allows them to add a hundred and twenty square feet. So they decide they're going to have to sell in Maplewood. But unfortunately, no one wants to buy this twelve hundred square foot two-bedroom home because they discovered that they can't add on to it. And they can't tear it down and build a new door. This family is now stuck living in their home that doesn't meet their needs, and they can't go inside the house and be bothered about it. So I hope they'll consider these items. I do think it's good legislation, but I think there needs to be some provisions in there for occupants. And I spoke of, there are long circumstances where this can be detrimental to people. So I hope that you will take another look at it, with advancing it, and some provisions on there that protect the occupants. I understand trying to do with developers, recovering to around the houses, but they want to, the occupants will need to pass them so in how we live, you know, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we're going to take a Zoom hand.
Hello, Elizabeth.
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. Okay, cool. My name is Elizabeth Nathanson. I'm from seventy-three eighty-seven Flora Avenue, and I agree with Mary. We need to table this until we have further discussion with the community. You guys rally on transparency to the community, and right now, that by pushing this forward, that's not very transparent to the community. That's all I have to comment on this discussion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shabnam Mira. I'm at three-one three-five Cherry Avenue. I wanted to say first, I appreciate what I think is the spirit of this proposed change, which is to avoid what's happened in some communities where little homes that have been there for a long time that make up that are part of this beauty of this neighborhood are demolished and four thousand square foot homes are there and blocking the sunlight and changing the structure of the neighborhood. I don't want to see that happen here in Maplewood. I appreciate that that's the spirit of this. I will say, though, I think that the calculation method used is, you know, results in arbitrary result in almost all cases. It's not reasonably limited, and it doesn't apply equally to everybody, which I think is the biggest problem and why I'm hoping that you will consider citizens' comments before passing this ordinance. You know, the language essentially says that a reconstruction or renovation to an existing home shall have a square footage no greater than ten percent above the average square footage of existing single-family detached dwellings within a three hundred foot radius. How, who's going to calculate that, or I don't know, but it's not equally applicable to all residents, such that depending on where you live and the size of the house is within three hundred feet of you, your ability to add or change your house is potentially limited, even more than somebody who might live a few streets away. I will say also, I think the enabling statute that gives the council authority to enact zoning ordinances is very clear that you can restrict height, number of stories, size of buildings, and percentage of a lot that may be occupied. In this case, I think that the ordinance doesn't set forth a clear size restriction as it is not equally applicable to all residents. And so in my opinion, on that basis, it's, I don't, I think it exceeds the authority of the council, frankly. And I think it's arbitrary. I think it's an unreasonable exercise of the council's power. I would hope, much like what Ray said, I was going through scenarios and thinking, if I came in and bought a thirteen hundred square foot house with enough size, enough lot size to add, you know, another bathroom, or, you know, maybe another bedroom, expand my kitchen, if the houses around me were twelve hundred square foot, still pretty small, I wouldn't be able to add on to my house. I think that's arbitrary, whereas somebody else who has the same size house, who has larger houses around them, could add on and double the size of their house. I just don't think that that is equitable. And so that's why I hope that you I hope that you will consider these things before you pass this ordinance. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Traxler, item number eight.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by the city to temporarily suspend enforcement of Section twelve dash one-one-seven Adoption of Property Maintenance Code, Section three oh two point four, and Section fifty-four dash fifty-six of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances to promote, NMO April from April one through thirty, two thousand twenty-four.
At this time, the public is invited to provide comment on item number eight.
Recover, seventy-one fourteen High Street. Thank you for not making me remember. I love it.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number nine.
Approval of the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number ten, please.
Approval of the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Traxler, item number eleven.
Announcements.
The coffee crawl was awesome, and if you missed out, I'm really sorry that you missed out on delicious caffeine and wonderful people.
Mr. Traxler, item number twelve.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to provide comment. You're joining us online. Please raise your Zoom hand. If you're in the chambers, please step to the podium. Item number thirteen, please. Oh, okay. We did, we did.
Okay. Good. And Char, twenty-one forty-nine Bellevue Ave. This week, my three-year-old son pushed his toy box over to the window, climbed on top, and looked out the window at the banner and flag just beyond it. I took a video as I asked him what he was doing. He told me he was watching the flag to make sure no one took it. He didn't want to go to the park or library or even to an elevator, which is his absolute favorite. He wanted to stand watch. After I dragged him away and put him in his car seat to go to the library, I gently tried to prod to see how much he understood about our flag and the banner being taken and vandalized, something we've tried to shield him from. He told me, it's a flag to keep me safe. I asked him why he would be unsafe, and he said, from Haman, because he doesn't like the Jews. Haman is the villain from the most recent Jewish holiday, Purim. Like in almost every Jewish story, Haman wanted to kill the Jews but failed, and we celebrate the overcoming of the Jewish people. If you like this story, stay tuned for Passover and Hanukkah. While my three-year-old conflates the stories, he isn't wrong. We do fly the flag to keep him safe. We aren't anti-Palestinian. We don't want anyone harmed. We don't want anyone bombed, assaulted, kidnapped, raped, starved, or held hostage on any side of a conflict. We want a ceasefire, and we want the hostages returned and a lasting peace agreement that can build stability. But what we want politically is irrelevant to what we want in our home. I want my child and my family to feel safe and proud to be a Jew in Maplewood. I want my son to grow up with a respect for other faiths and cultures, and I want him to feel respected. We do not feel safe as Jews in Maplewood. Since the start of two thousand twenty-four, we've had our Jewish flag stolen four times. Our banner praying for the return of the hostages torn down. A long handwritten letter placed in our mailbox saying we would go to hell if we didn't find Jesus. The middle finger held to our security cameras we reluctantly had put up. And on Purim, two days ago, the day we celebrate the Jews overcoming Haman's attempted genocide, I had a message sent to me on Facebook showing me a woman driving by our home with the caption, so tired of this bitch, yelling from the river to the sea and waving a Palestinian flag. It was four P M., and we got home from the Purim spiel at shul ten minutes after this incident. We are tired of people cursing at us. We are tired of waking up to every noise in the night and wondering if someone, like has repeatedly happened, is outside in the dark, feet from our door, defiling and taking over our religious expressions. I don't know whether some of the people who drive by and yell from the river to the sea know what river and sea they're talking about, or realize that this is a call for the erasure of the state of Israel, the only Jewish state in the world. It's hard to imagine that they don't. The ABL classifies this as anti-Semitic hate speech, and that incites violence. I realize the politics of the Middle East are complicated, and they are far beyond the scope and practice of the Maplewood City Council or even state governments. But my plea here tonight is that our elected officials, who have been supportive of us in our safety, use the term antisemitism in their condemnations, because that's what this is. The acts we have experienced are not simple threat or harassment. They are designed to intimidate. They are designed to promote violence. They are designed to instill sleepless nights. They are designed to embody hate. We are beginning to think that Maplewood isn't what we hoped, that a loud minority of our neighbors are determined to force us out. But we also love Maplewood. We actually fell in love with it here because of its radical hospitality. When we saw the solar charger and food pantries in Sutton Loop in Yale, we felt we had found a community where we could raise a child. We need change. We need the unequivocal condemnation of antisemitism in our community, and we need a good night's sleep.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Mannif. I'm at seven four six one Elm Avenue. I've lived here for almost thirty years. I grew up here. Since he was twenty years old, he was born in nineteen forty. I'm absolutely shocked at what you just said because I have never heard that much craziness that went on in Maplewood. And I'm really sorry that you have to go through that. I just got two questions. First of all, I got, it was, that's my tension, that this whole thing with the about adding on. Is that's interesting. I just read a lot of articles about. And if you're all about transparency, how come most people think this? Because I think, Jeff, that most of the residents, the tax companies, residents know about this. This place would be fucked. Because I've been there for like five years now. Okay, I was looking into it. Let's show you that, granted, it's really religious, but this place would be fucked because everyone was familiar with Maplewood. I know. The second thing coming is the glasses to read this. Let's think about, in St. Louis County, I got two those ago. Some of the proposals in jail, my question is, why is this not described? What this proposition is all about? All it summarizes is, it's something enjoyed the call, the shit article. I asked the Department of the Southern Children, the Southern neighborhood, as though the answer was outright, the city ordinance is supposed to be now. Okay, I'm sure we're all aware. I don't even know what ordinance is supposed to be in Sylva's. So here, with someone that's not familiar, what's going on with the neighborhood? Not what that means. So my question number one is, who submits this to the county? Question number two is, why is it so wrong? It means nothing. It's not on purpose. So the vast majority of the photos, don't, what's going on? Hopefully, that's thanks to your the real meaning of the proposition well, which was absolutely ridiculous. And I don't want one penny of my money going to it. So I don't have any answer questions, but I would like answers to those questions. And that's just, I can go on with two other questions, but I don't think that's one of it. Thank you. I would like to say, one reason, I really do hope that we listen to the people that still think it's hard to be citizens of Maplewood, that you want, what because if you really truly care about citizens in Maplewood, you would table that. And then, and let other things show them out, and this is exactly what the changes are. That would be completely authentic.
Thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number thirteen.
Council communication.
Corinne, I would like to say that I am incredibly sorry for everything that your family has went through. I was one of the people that you initially contacted when this happened. I've tried to walk side by side with you in solidarity through this entire ordeal. You are my neighbor. I can see your home from my employer and my home. I am so sorry that these anti-Semitic acts keep happening to you and your family. You are wanted here. You are needed here. You are welcome here, and keep flying that flag.
Well, I'll echo my Ward Two colleague. I have to say, I think, Ms. Char, the worst thing I've ever heard in this chamber was, we don't feel safe as Jews in Maplewood. That was really hard to hear. And I feel really gunless with the limited tools to fight this antisemitism that's happening in our community, but we see you and we're aware, and it's something that we're talking about and working on. So I appreciate your comments, and that takes some courage. That's not why I wanted to speak up, though. Sorry, you're about to hop in. I'm actually going to vote against the amendment to fifty-six. That might surprise some of my colleagues. But I want to say why, while I have the floor. I think, you know, I think about what Mr. Crater shared with us, and I know Mr. Crater well and trust his judgment and thinking on this kind of thing. Sorry, I'm talking to that. So, you know, I want to make sure we get it right. I still believe in what the ordinance is for, and I think there's a way to do it where we're happy with it, we, as a community. Now, I want to say this, and this is a really critical thing to communicate. I'm not voting against it for anything to do with transparency. You know, every time we pass an ordinance, there's a process, and the process is built to create transparency. So, you know, you can't come into chambers and say every ordinance we pass, well, there's a lack of transparency. We have all of this rigmarole is set up so that the community can hear and comment on this stuff. And my vote tonight is proof that that works. I initially voted for this. I have now heard some public comment. I'm going to vote against it, and we can, if that works, we can discuss it, but it is not about transparency. There is no lack of transparency on this council, and I frankly can't handle that narrative any longer.
I'm just going to go along with what Councilmember Page is saying. I keep coming back to the phrase owner occupant provisions, and that is wording we need to accommodate in this, I think. Because I do like it. I think it's smart. There's been some teardowns and rebuilds near my house that I go for walks, and I'm like, oh, oh, God, where'd that house come from? It's huge. And then I think my property taxes are going to be really sad. So I do think it's good. I think it needs a little more finessing, though. And in response to one of the questions about why was the ballot initiative for Prop J, you know, so limited? It actually is a word limit for ballots, and we had workshopped it and workshopped it, and then when we were working on it with the city attorney, what we came up with was the best option we could, given the word limit and the wording we needed. We did have several sessions where we met with the public at different times of day to try and make sure people could talk to us and learn about Prop J. So, thank you all.
Yeah, I do. I was hoping somebody else would talk for a second verse, though. So I want to say I do, some of the issues that brought up, I will speak to some of the math. You know, the math that you're using to say your instance is the one that's going to, you know, restrict you, that may be the case. I don't know your scenario. But that's not everyone's case. So that's the problem with, in anything that we're ever going to do, there's an upside and a downside to everything, right? And there are some houses on the block that are bigger than others, right? So someone that has a larger size house on a block, right, they obviously are going to get the short side of a restriction of stopping houses from being supermassive, right? So I understand what you're saying, and I hear you, but the flip side of that is that nine hundred square foot house that's on that block with all of the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, even twenty-three hundred square foot houses in that area, they're not going to have those same limitations. So the numbers are tricky in Maplewood because we have various lot size, various home sizes, right? And that's why we tried to broaden this as much as we could. And that's why we tried to broaden this as much as we could with the radius that we used. Um, I I do understand that um we don't always get it right, right? Sometimes we can look back at things and go, you know, maybe we need to take a second look at something, maybe maybe we do need to to look at that. Um, I I'm okay with that, I I um I I think I agree um with the aspect of of renovation. Um, I I don't think we captured what I was intending to capture with this. Um, I I think where we're going with this as far as making sure that nine hundred square foot houses are not torn down and thirty-three hundred square foot houses are put in their place. I think that's important, I'm not gonna back down on that, I stand on that. That's why our property taxes are going up, that's why our home values are increasing dramatically. I love the fact that we have a great investment and our houses are are valuable to us, but it needs to be at an acceptable pace that we can afford and people can afford to still come and live in Maplewood, right? That's where the diversity comes from, is having all 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 levels of incomes, right? Having housing stock for each one of us, whether we're later in life and we can afford more, or we're new in life with young children, and we want to do that. So for me, um, I really 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 want to see this pass. And I and I think that maybe relooking at this is probably a smart idea. Um, I I appreciate everybody coming out and talking about it. I'm making sure that it was not done without public comment on purpose. Right, that was, that was an error made. That's okay, we make mistakes, staff makes mistakes, I'm not here to push blame. Um, so I I don't know what more to say other than it's 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 important, this piece of, this piece of ordinance is the sole reason I'm sitting up here. A hundred percent, I don't the title, all of the politics means nothing to me, the 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 part that I noticed is that our home values are going up, our taxes are going up, right? It's getting harder and harder to afford to move here. And we've got to start doing things to fix it, and there's not one fix. Right, that's what planning and zoning is doing, that's what council is doing, that's what I I've been dedicating as much time as I can to is how many areas can we solve this problem? That's the only way we're gonna solve this problem. So I don't know if we can, if we can table this, if that's a formality, or if this is a, if this is a down vote, I'm okay with it, I'm happy to bring this back.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Traxler, item number fourteen.
Mayor's report.
So to my colleague, Councilmember Corel. I'm always telling you to give yourself grace. I'm gonna say it again. Um, and also I want to add on to what our colleague, Councilmember Page, said about transparency. This process has been transparent. This this ordinance that we are discussing right now was on the agenda for the last meeting. That information was contained in an agenda packet. There is nothing that we are keeping from the public regarding this ordinance. The process that we go through to enacting ordinance is we go through two readings uh, in one meeting, and then the next meeting will go through that final reading. There's public comment at that time, so the public is always invited to speak on whatever they would like, whether it be on the agenda or not on the agenda. So I just want to echo what my colleague said, like we are required by law to do this in public, publicly. We are required by law to provide you all with notice at least twenty-four hours. We do that. So I understand if it's frustrating that you may not be accustomed to the process that we go through, I understand that. But we are transparent. So thank you to my colleagues on that. Um, and then Matt, I'm sorry, Councilmember Corel, we didn't do anything wrong, right? Like, there was public comment, so that's where I'm just like, give yourself grace. All right. Ms. Ms. Char, there you are. So I was prepared already to basically state that you and your family do not deserve to be on the other side or the receiving end of antisemitic harassment. Um, and I want you to know that I'm not sure how well you may know Beth Newman. Okay, okay, okay. Um, but but that community member reached out to me, and and she made the request to me, and it was easy. Sometimes other people just need to be reminded. So I already had you. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Um, it is not okay that your family is experiencing antisemitic harassment. It is not okay that you don't feel safe in your house, it's not okay. I do want to um give thanks to our Maplewood Police Department because they did apprehend one person that was harassing you all, and that was a Richmond Heights resident. So thank you for being diligent about filing the police report, making sure that you are going to get the protection that you deserve and that you needed from our police uh department, and I'm grateful for our police department for doing such good work very quickly. So there is a baby in the room, and she's not a baby, but I call her a baby because in the South, all children are babies, yes, hi people. Um, I want to draw our attention to March thirty-first being Transgender Day of Visibility. Um, Maplewood and the MRH School District is a haven for trans babies. And this council and the city has a resolution on the books that you have a copy of that recognizes the Transgender Day of Visibility, celebrates it, will continue to celebrate it. So thank you for being so brave. You were really Talia was the person that sparked the idea to even have the resolution. And I just want to reiterate that young people really can have an effect on their local government, and you can affect change and you can create things, so thank you so much, baby. All right. Oh, thank you. Okay, so our last uh council meeting, we heard from Ms. Patty Nury, uh, community member, and Ms. Nury made a comment about uh Ms. Withakam being a nepotism higher uh and me committing cronyism. I didn't get to respond to that at that time, but I am going to do it now. A mayor in South Carolina said, a lie unanswered is a lie believed. That's a lie. And I want to walk through the process again, because I did this in December. But I'm gonna walk through the process again. We had a resignation of a city manager. We had a, our chief of police step up, and I'll be forever grateful to him for that, step up and be our interim city manager. Our chief, then interim city manager, told us that we were essentially in dire straits as far as our city employees feeling low because we would have to go through another hiring process, and how long the previous hiring process took. So they were discouraged. And he was concerned about those city employees being discouraged, which caused me to be alarmed, which caused council to be alarmed as well. Did we make mistakes, HR mistakes during that process? Yes. And I have no problem admitting when I make a mistake. I was in a sense of urgency to get that position filled because the city employees needed leadership. Counsel agreed. One of the lies that I have seen throughout since December has been the mayor's doing everything on her own. That is not possible. Our charter states that that's not possible. I cannot do anything without counsel. I need to have at least three other people to vote with me to affect anything. And that is what happened with this process. We got to a point where decisions were being made on who was going to receive an invitation to interview. I was not a part of that process. If you look at the votes that took place, you will see that I abstained. Every vote we had to hire the city manager that we have right now, I was not a part of it. So to say that I have participated in nepo nepotism and cronyism is not a fact. It's just not a fact. Now, if you're angry with me about something else, then fine, be angry about that. But don't lie. There are facts. You can find the facts in our minutes. We keep a record of what we do, we keep a record of the votes that we have. And this is just a tangent. We have a a a journalist presents himself as a journalist that has created and sent so many FOIA requests to the city only to go back and report misinformation. For example, there is a a publication from this journalist that that gives the wrong um salary information for our city manager. It's not a fact. It's amazing to me how we can have publications that are printing misinformation, and it's just decided, okay, because this is in a newspaper, this is true. Y'all, please. If we haven't learned anything from the past presidential elections that we've seen, we at least know that not everything that you see in a publication is true. And when you can go to the source, which is going to be council minutes, you can find the truth. Going back to Ms. Withakam. I'm happy you're here. I'm glad that the council saw that you were qualified for this position, and the council voted for you to be in this position. I appreciate Deputy Mayor Fockingham for taking over the process, because that wasn't reported either. I did not manage the process of hiring the city manager, our deputy mayor did. So our deputy mayor loved that, and then our council voted on it. Please, y'all, stop believing lies. We have a highly qualified, extremely dedicated woman that is our city manager. And folks want to say, you know, she she is not qualified because she hasn't finished her MPA. When I tell you that our city manager that we have right now has done so much in the short time that she's been here, she's uncovered so many issues that we need to address, and she is finding solutions for them, I'm fine. She is so dedicated. I have to tell her, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, Tashawn, because you're still working. It's Sunday, why are you working? She's working because she cares about Maplewood, and I appreciate you for that. That concludes my report. Mr. Traxler, item number fifteen.
City Attorney's Report.
Welcome. Item number sixteen, please.
City Manager's Report.
Mayor and Council. Among the items that I've included in my report tonight, I want to elevate the first one, which is our collective bargaining agreement negotiation with our firefighters. Those talks have been progressing very well. We are on course, we believe, to finish that negotiation and sign that agreement around the end of the fiscal year. One piece that we need to put in place um is a revision on some of our personnel ordinances that are out of step with um where we think they need to be in order for us not only to be in alignment with the requests that are being made out of this agreement, but also for the benefit of all staff. Um, so we're looking at a couple of ordinances that we want to bring forward to a work session first for you to see us at your next meeting, so that we can get your feedback on that. We are required to give staff ample notice to be able to react to those changes, so we wouldn't be looking at having you vote on these until um, your main meetings. But that being said, I just wanted to prepare you for that eventuality that we're going to be making some recommendations there and giving an opportunity to discuss those. Um, I will be sharing the progress of closer to that packet distribution of where we are in those negotiations to have a little bit more information about the grounding in which we're asking for these changes, but I wanted to signal that and ask for you um to put that on the agenda for the work session. Um, I will also note that application period for boards and commissions will be opening shortly. We have twenty seats that will be up um either for an existing member or a vacancy. Um, so we're gonna be going through a lot of applications, just be prepared for that, but uh we're refining our system every year, and it's in a good place, so um, work for that coming forward.
Item number seventeen, Mr. Traxler.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Rene Farmer to the Human Services Commission.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing non, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Corel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash eight is approved.
Item number eighteen, please.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Kate Cannon to the Sustainability Commission.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing non, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Corel.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash nine is approved.
Thank you. Item number nineteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Douglas DeLonge to the Board of Adjustment and Housing Board of Appeals.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Orqur resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing non, all those, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Corel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash ten is approved.
Thank you. Item number twenty, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four, Offenses, Article six, offenses against against public peace, Section thirty-four dash one seven one, hate offenses to add stealing.
That was the first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
This is good, this is really good, especially for the situations that just occurred.
I wish that we could have had the forethought to think of this, right? Um, but even though this this is in reaction to it, it's, we're definitely going to address this, so yes, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate any agency we can have to feel like we're pushing back feels good, so I recognize it's a day late and a dollar short, but you know, there's a, you know.
Oh, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four, Offenses, Article six, offenses against public peace, Section thirty-four dash one seven one, hate offenses to add stealing.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the April twenty-third council meeting. Right, Mr. Traxler, you ready? All right, item number twenty-one.
An ordinance of the An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration. Article five, Revenue and Finance, Division two, Procurement Regulations, Section thirty-two dash two eight seven. Formal competitive building bidding, Chapter forty-two, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places. Article three, Improvements, Section forty-two dash sixty-one, Contract for Improvement, et cetera, Generally. Chapter forty-two, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article five, Sidewalks. Section forty-two dash one twenty-eight, Same Bids, Estimates. Chapter forty-two, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article six, Special Assessments. Section forty-two dash one fifty-two, Resolution and Publication Required to Set Requirements. For All Contractors Bidding on Publicly Funded Projects.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration. Article five, Revenue and Finance, Division two, Procurement Regulations, Section thirty-two dash two eighty-seven, formal competitive bidding. Chapter forty-two, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article three, Improvements, Section forty-two dash sixty-one. Contract for Improvements, et cetera, Generally. Chapter forty-two, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article five, Sidewalks. Section forty-two dash one twenty-eight, Same Bids, Estimates. Chapter forty-two, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places. Article six, Special Assessments, Section forty-two dash one fifty-two, Resolution and Publication Required. Set requirements for all contractors bidding on publicly funded projects.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the April twenty-third council meeting. Mr. Traxler, item number twenty-two.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty. Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article three, Additional Traffic Regulations. To add a new section fifty dash ninety-six, pedestrians right of way and crosswalks.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty, Traffic and Motor Vehicles. Article three, Additional Traffic Regulations, to add a new section fifty dash ninety-six, pedestrians right of way and crosswalks.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the April twenty-third council meeting. Item number twenty-three, please.
Bill sixty forty-five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty-six, zoning. Section fifty-six dash seventy-three, Use Regulations, Subsections A, Lot Size Standards. B, Front Yard Setback, E, Height and Bulk Standards, G, Parking. The section fifty-six dash one zero six one, Nonconforming Lots of Record. A, Residential Districts, Subsection one, to bring lot size and setback standards into alignment with existing averages. And to preserve local neighborhood characteristics and housing affordability.
That was the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just very quickly, I just want to say to Councilperson Correll, I hope we're okay, because I still very much believe in what this is doing. I just want to make sure we fine tune it where it feels rock solid and you feel like that's your legacy and we love it. But I still believe in this, but I'm gonna vote no because I want to get it right.
Well, my legacy will forever be my beard. No, I, the people spoke and and I agree. It's it's not just a, you know, it's it's sometimes. Whatever. Sometimes we get tunnel vision, we lose sight of some of the things, right? So we need to go back into it. We're gonna go back into it. It's coming back. So feel free. This is, this is the moment, right? You've heard it. You're seeing it. It's happening. If you have a comment, shoot me an email, right? It's very easy to be a part of the process. So let us know. You know what I mean? I can, I can tell you right now, we're always looking for volunteers. You hear twenty boards and commission, it's coming up, so I'm gonna keep handling. But it's not a, this isn't a no vote because it's going away. This is a no vote to make things better. I am.
Aye.
Uh, Anthony, quick question. Uh, with an ordinance change like this. This is just from my own thought process. Couldn't they get a variance on it?
Yes.
So so they could still get a variance even though we're, we're creating some, some restrictions to. What was out there before, but they could still get a variance. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm listening to my colleagues right now, but.
No, I mean, I, I.
Listen, I, I appreciate that it could be, there's a variance opportunity with any of these things, but I. No, no, I, I wanna, I wanna take it off too, we can fine tune. No, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not countervailing what you're saying, what I've just, for public absorption, I. I think we want our ordinances to be the, the, the majority of case, right, to fit the majority of cases to where the variances are the oddball. And I just worry that that is written in such a way where it's gonna be, every damn one's gonna be a variance. We don't want that.
We're on the first reading. Wait, no, sorry, this is a roll call, but we're in discussion, my bad. Alright, any further discussion?
It's okay. It's coming back. I appreciate everybody's, seriously, I appreciate your comments.
I just want to add that. We have people that are not present today that have also spoken. And they are the reason why you did this. And so I am all for us finding a balance, but let's find a balance. I don't want what our community has asked us for, which is to like, address ways that we can push back. On property taxes being so like increased exponentially to be lost. So I'm cool with finding a balance, but like, I also just want to reiterate. Our community as a whole wants to see affordable hous- housing remain. And affordable housing is then their ability to stay in their house.
Yeah, the, the renovation part of it is, is the red flag. And 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 I think, I think we're, we're in some good, we're in some really good territory and and I think we're, we're in a really good spot. I think we need to just. To to step into that renovation factor and just take another look at the numbers.
Any further discussion? Alright, Mr. Traxler, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
No.
Mayor Canapper. Councilmember Maddox.
No.
Councilmember Page.
No.
Councilmember Correll.
No.
Member Fockingham.
No.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Bill sixty forty-five is denied.
Thank you. Alright. Item number twenty-four.
Bill sixty forty-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, temporarily, temporarily suspending enforcement of Chapter twelve. Section twelve dash one one seven, Adoption of Property Maintenance Code, Section three oh two point four, weeds. The chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash fifty-six, Cutting Required. The Code of Ordinances relating to the growth of grass or weeds for mow, no mow April from April one through thirty. Twenty twenty-four, in support of pollinators and wildlife habitat.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I want to thank the Sustainability Commission for watching my house and noticing that I've been moving for years. Which has not cut my grass ever months at a time. This is a really cool thing. I think this is fantastic that we're doing. So this is great.
Pollinator, pollinators, awesome. Um, it's not nuts at a time, though, sir, it's April, okay? I just wanna.
I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Hey.
I, I was gonna add my chorus of thank you for that. And I will say, I don't know if you, any of you have ever had an opportunity to have some MRH honey. It's a thing. They have hives. And there are rare opportunities where you can get it, and so let's protect those pollinators, because what a treat. Uh, Anthony, quick question. This won't. And Maplewood right of ways and parks, of course, we're gonna do no mow as well.
In certain areas, for example, there's hillsides and and things of that nature. We've already gone through with our grass contractor and picked. Areas out where we don't want to create hazards in the future. Once we do that. Don't have to worry about rabbits in certain areas.
Right.
They like to nest in tall grass. So we've, we've gone through and worked out some areas, for example, City Hall, we're not gonna have any cutting whatsoever. Obviously, in sports and athletic fields, we're still gonna cut because they still need the field to be maintained properly.
Right.
So it's kind of a, gonna be a hit or miss factor.
Okay, no, I was just curious. I'm, I'm glad we are doing that.
We, we, we finalized all the, uh, locations this afternoon with our contractor.
Any further discussion? Right, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Bill sixty forty-six becomes ordinance sixty forty.
Thank you. Item number twenty-five, please.
Bill sixty forty-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, ratifying Resolution. R twenty-four dash two, and authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the City of Maplewood, Missouri. The cities of Brentwood, Clayton, and Richmond Heights for the purpose of joining the Central Core Fire Training Center Commission.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
Yay.
Yes. I just want to thank Chief Marsack. I know he's not here. Hopefully, Ms. Worthakun, you'll let him know. I, I appreciate him for. Pushing through and not taking the no. Because he was told no and he saw how important this would be for Maplewood and he just waited. And then he came back. He actually had an opportunity to ask us, and so I'm grateful that he was patient and didn't give up. So please relay that to him for me. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's nice to know that the fire department is always looking for. Uh, ways to maximize working with other municipalities and stuff, which I always think is great, so.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Correll.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Bill sixty forty-seven becomes ordinance sixty forty-one.
Thank you. Item number twenty-six, please.
Old business.
And we do not need to hold a closed session, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.